Council meeting, Your Honor. Will everybody please rise for a moment of silence? And while we're standing, let's remember all those who passed away in town, including Officer Carlos Rivera's father, who passed away about a week ago. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, we were in executive session discussing some personnel issues and some hiring issues with the borough, and that took place for about 20 minutes. Can I have your call, please?
Mr. Devine?
Here.
Mr. Sabatini?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Kamau?
Here.
Mr. Plant?
Here.
Here. At this time, we're going to just skip around. We're going to do the certificate of commendation. Our mayor wants to do a presentation.
I have Detective Robert Lebo and Jack Pietro come up front, please. It gives me honor to present these certificates of commendations to both these individuals, not because they did the right thing, but because they are my nephews. Actually, Detective Robert is my namesake. Sometimes he goes, does things for me, and I do things for him. But they foiled a robbery, and I thought, you know, I knew Detective Lebo would do it, but I never expected my other nephew to do it, because he's not in law enforcement. I'd just like to read these commendations. I'm not going to read both of them, because they both have the same thing on it, however, they have different names on it. This is certificate of commendation to Detective Robert Lebo and Jack Pietro is hereby recognized by the Borough Council and Mayor for their efforts in apprehension of a robbery suspect at the Golden Eagle Diner on April 14th, 2012, signed by Ralph Di Giuseppe, President of Council.
And your straight-up mayor.
Congratulations.
Would you like to say anything?
I just want to say thank you. That night, while we were there, there were many people that went forward to help that night. Jack and I were just the first ones there. A lot of people make decisions in their lives. We happened to make a right decision that night, and that gentleman came in to rob the diner, made a bad decision.
I appreciate the commendation, Council, Your Honor, Your mayonnaise. Again, I'm just happy that everything worked out well, and for the good. Yeah, like my cousin said, it's a good thing we were there, and we were able to get involved and do something. And there were a lot of people that were there to lend some support, so thank you again.
I just have one other thing. I understand that while the police officer was trying to obtain whether or not the individual had a weapon, this big guy, and he's a big guy, held him down on the floor. So, you know, I think I would be afraid to be pulled down on the floor with him also, but congratulations again. Thank you.
Good job, Paul. Thank you. Great job.
Thanks, Jeff.
Congratulations. Great job.
Wish you did sing some words. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another presentation by the American Heart Association, and I'll have Mrs. Rodriguez bring her up.
Yeah, this time, I'd just like to take a moment to invite up Ms. Teresa Cunejo, who's here on behalf of the American Heart Association for the presentation, and she's stands too big for the cause. You can come up here.
Hello, everybody.
Want a mic?
Hi, Robin.
Hello, everybody. Oh, okay. My name's Teresa Cunejo, and I'd like to take this time to thank Council, thank the mayor for having me here tonight. I know you have a very busy schedule. I'm from the American Heart Association of southeastern Pennsylvania, and my position there is I'm on the National Advocacy Committee, and what I do is I help with public guidelines and bills that are related to cardiovascular disease. I work on a local level, a state level, and a federal level, and I represent the eighth district, congressional district. But I'm here tonight because I wanted to give recommendation to some special people here in Bristol Borough. I don't know if you know this, but 83 million adults suffer from cardiovascular disease, and 2,200 people die a day of cardiovascular disease. That's like one person every 39 minutes. It's the number-one killer of women. A lot of people think that breast cancer is the number-one killer, but it's not. It's cardiovascular disease. So we at the American Heart Association, we set aside the first Friday in February to bring about awareness of this disease in women, and it's called the National Go Red for Women Day. And we ask people to wear red and bring about recognition and awareness of cardiovascular disease in women. So we had some merchants here on Mill Street that took up the cause, and they got together, and they stepped up, and they wanted to do something, and they called it Mill Street Goes Red. And what they did was, on February 3rd, they decorated their windows, they wore red, they handed out pamphlets related to heart disease and stroke. And I'm here to thank all of them for stepping up and doing this. It was a great day, a lot of camaraderie, and I have a list of people who participated. Special mention, the Groovy U Store. They donated half of their proceeds that day to the American Heart Association. First federal savings, they donated $5 for every savings and checking account that was opened. Then we had National Penn Bank. Joanna Schneider over there had a beautiful display. She had refreshments, and she was giving out educational material. Attraction Tattoo, Mignonie Jewelers, Bruce Gentleman's Barber Shop, Mill Street Mini-Mart, Color Fanatic Hair Salon, Kimberly Noell Photography. Dr. George Sabu and Bristol Cardiology participated. Latino Leadership Alliance, Dr. Charlie Flood. Couch House Waitresses wore red, and they had their little Go Red pin lawn like I have on. Bristol Borough workers, Marie Fields and her staff, wore red that day, and they supported us. And Bristol Borough Police Staff was there. And also WBCB and the Bucks County Carrier Times for letting people know about this event and what we did in Mill Street. But we had one particular organization, one particular merchant, that stepped up to the plate, and he went above and beyond. He decided to do it the whole month of February. He did an initiative called Hearts in February, where he donated proceeds from his heart tattoos to the American Heart Association. And he set a goal, and he reached that goal, and even went beyond the goal. So we, from the American Heart Association, we thank him for his fundraising efforts, but also for raising awareness to this disease. And at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Eddie Lee Wilson up. We have something for him for his efforts.
He had a special passion for the American Heart Association, so that's why he reached out to our organization. And he's going to tell you a little bit about his passion for our organization.
I felt like cardiovascular disease doesn't really get enough attention. You know, a lot of the other conditions that we deal with on a medical level get a lot of exposure. Heart disease really doesn't. One of my aunts died at a really young age of heart failure, my grandfather died of heart failure, my father died of heart failure. I'm diabetic, so, I mean, as the newspaper quoted me, I'm pretty much screwed. So, you know, as far as that goes, we've got to do something. We've got to do something so everybody knows what potential lays in front of you if you don't take care of yourself. I know from working in hospitals and stuff that most people don't know anything about cardiovascular disease until a loved one or themselves are in a cath lab. You know, until they're in the hospital, something happened, a stroke, heart failure, something like that. So what can we do to prevent that? What can we do to start to get people to know about that? You know, everybody knows about other things that are horrible that happen to us, you know, on a medical level, but heart disease kind of gets a little swept under the rug a little bit, because, ah, well, you know, you got a bad heart. Well, not necessarily, you know, if other things had been done to prevent that, you know. So that's kind of what I want to do. I want to make sure, my three kids are here, you know, I want to make sure that I'm there for them when they're my age. The idea, and my wife actually came up with the idea, my wife Rebecca right there, she came up with the idea to do heart tattoos in February as some kind of a drive, some kind of a promotion, something like that, and then it immediately popped in my head that we'll do hearts for the American Heart Association. Then I started trying to get a hold of the American Heart Association, trying to find out what they would, you know, what they would co-sign. And that was really difficult, because they, the only answer I got from them immediately, first off, was we want 100% of the proceeds. Well, here's my, here's my son. Well, you know, I tried to tell them, we can't do that. We can't do that, we can't give you everything, but we want to give you at least a portion for each one. Well, then I got the, through Teresa, she connected me with the right people, and I got a third-party fundraiser form, sent it in. We did $30 heart tattoos from Select Flash that we drew, and of that $30, $10 for each one of those heart tattoos went to the American Heart Association, and it's all right here. We raised $1,350.
Wow.
Our goal initially was $1,000. So we beat $1,000, and we're going to do, we're going to continue to do it every February. I see no reason why not to. So next February, I guess I can draw some better hearts, and we can try to do more than $1,350.
Well, in recognition of your efforts, Eddie, we at the American Heart Association have something for you to put on your wall for your customers to see.
The American Heart Association, in recognition of Eddie Lee Wilson and Attraction Tattoos for his generosity and commitment to fight against heart disease. Thank you, everybody. And also, I just want you to go on our website, goradforwomen.org.
Or is it .com?
Good job, Ben.
.org. And there you find out the signs and symptoms of heart disease and how you can prevent it. Thank you, Teresa.
Just want to get an update. I'm going to call up Bill Pezzetta to update us on the DVD that they're making.
Good evening. That was very impressive. You know, tattoos, my generation kind of missed that whole culture, but I'm going to make you a deal. If I'm going to start lifting, I do cardio every day, I'm going to start lifting, as soon as I get an arm big enough to hold a tattoo, like an arm like Tony or Leo's or Pat's, I'm going to maybe get the Grundy Clock. And maybe Ralph, we can do it together. Let me see. All right. A great deal has happened since last week's report about the Bristol Borough Marketing DVD, and at this time, I'd like to fill you in on how we're going to launch the project, as I told you before, and we now have a date. I've been in constant contact with Council President Di Giuseppe, with Councilman Sabatini, with the Borough Manager. I've been in constant contact with those people, so that there were no misunderstandings along the way. The first showing of our marketing DVD will be Tuesday night, May 29th, at 7:00, at the Bristol Riverside Theater. It's a little earlier than we originally anticipated, but we had to work around the theater's schedule, and that's the date we had to settle on. The evening will include a showing of the DVD, followed by a wine and cheese reception. This will come at no added cost to the borough. The refreshments are being donated. In fact, this might be a good time to say that people are just coming forward with a great deal of enthusiasm. Ever since I knew the project was going to happen, people have called to say, what can I do? And I've given them things to do, and one of them is to take care of the wine and cheese for that reception. Every step along the way, when we asked people for help, no one said no. I mean, no one. So this will be a proud night for Bristol Borough, and we urge the general public to attend. In addition, since this is a marketing video, invitations will go out Wednesday, this Wednesday, to elected officials throughout the county, to economic development groups, to tourist groups, historic societies, realtors, and so on. The list is long. We want a realtor to be able to say to anyone who inquires about Bristol at all, let me show you, let me give you a DVD, let me give you an accurate picture of what our town has to offer. As I said before, the theme is that Bristol is a great place to visit, to live, and to invest, and we're inviting groups that might have an interest in any one of those three categories. The program is titled Historic Bristol Borough, Bucks County's Forgotten Treasure, Discover Us. In June, we'll be showing it on the Borough Channel and providing online links for various websites, historic groups that want to link to our showing can do it. We'll put it on YouTube and all those other things. But we think that it was important to have this launch first. It was important to put a group of people in a room, hopefully 300, who can feel the energy. There's a lot of people in town that really want to help. You know, you guys do the day-after-day work of managing the borough, but there's a lot of people that just want to help, they want to get involved. And we think that putting them all in the same room and having a good, proud night will generate the kind of energy, it'll have a ripple effect, it'll go on to other things. You guys have done a great job, and this video is going to highlight the positive attributes of town. We've said from the beginning, and people have said, you know, this is a dual process, that it's good to highlight the positive aspects of town, it's also good to work on the problems that we have, and that can be done and should be done simultaneously. You're entrusted with that part, and I think I'm confident that you guys can work together to get that done. So once again, it's May 29th, 7:00, the Bristol Riverside Theater. The ticket cost is $10. All the money raised in profit will go toward producing more DVDs and getting them out into people's hands. Anything left over after that will go back to the borough. You can purchase tickets at three places, Great IDs by Ann, Mignonie's Jewelry, and the Bristol Borough Tax Office. I want to stress that no one, aside from the professional services we contracted with for the video editing, no one who worked on this project received a dime, and no one will receive a dime. I want to thank the committee, myself, and Bert Barbetta, Harold Mitchner, Carol Mitchner, and Corky Russell. Corky Russell, for example, took over 500 still images. Andrew Salerno took hours of video footage, and we blended those together, as those of you who have seen it have seen, and we're very proud of it. So that's it. I'll be happy to answer your question if you have them, but otherwise, you'll be getting more information. We've already advertised, I got on Facebook today, and I saw that 30 people already responded positively to something that one of our volunteers put online. So it's getting a lot of excitement, and I think it's going to be very successful. And I want to thank you again for making all of this very easy.
Well, thanks for all your hard work. We'll go to Mayor's Communication. Do you have anything, Bob?
Yeah, I have a couple things. On April 19th, the Chief and I attended a dinner put on by Bucks County Juvenile Probation for the Bucks County Youth Aid Panel of Buckland County. I'm happy to say that our panel received an award for the Outstanding Achievement Award presented to the Bristol Borough Youth Aid Panel for exceptional commitment to the youth in our community, and it was presented by the Bucks County Juvenile Probation Officer. For those of you that don't know what the Youth Aid Panel is, it's a panel that is an extension of juvenile probation, juvenile court. It's for first-time offenders, first-time juvenile offenders, to give them a second chance. Most of them are for summary offenses, some misdemeanors. But I think it's a, our panel won this award. I happen to be the liaison officer the first time that the award was presented to us. For serious note, Monday night's council meeting, work session, it was brought up by Chief Slack that he would, that he requested the President of Council to appoint a panel to investigate my investigation of allegations by one of our other fire chiefs. I rendered my decision. As far as I'm concerned, it's over, and I hope that we don't have to do this. I don't want Council getting involved in this. The chief was suspended, or reprimanded. If Council wants to do it, fine, but you've got to consider double jeopardy in this process. So I'm really upset that the chief didn't come to me prior to the meeting. I've been trying to set up meetings with Chief Slack and the other chief. Chief Slack refuses to meet with this other chief. I feel that if we all three of us sat down, we could iron this problem out. Apparently, for some unknown reason, Chief Slack does not want to do that. I feel that if the President of Council does appoint a panel, not only is it a slap in my face, it's a slap in the community's face. I was elected to do a job, and I feel that I did the job that was, that should have been done concerning this matter. Again, I'm hoping that if there is a panel, that Council members refuse to sit in on it. As far as I'm concerned, the investigation is done. If the chief wants to go to a civil thing, that's his prerogative. This should have never been brought before Council, before it came to me, which it did. It went before Council, before it came to me. And I'm very upset over that. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Just before we get started with public participation, we're thinking about, and it's pretty 99.9% sure, that the grand opening for the Public Works Facility will be Saturday, June 23rd. There hasn't been a time yet, but most likely, it'll probably be around noon, 1:00, but we're shooting. We will announce that at our June meeting, when we firm everything up, but tentatively right now, it will be June 23rd. I want to open up public participation. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on any issue, please go to the podium and state your name for the record.
I have a few issues.
Terrence.
201 Wood Street. Ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Last thing I came to, I was asking you about the complaint that I put in about the harassment by the police, and I still didn't get a response back from the board. I'd like to know, who's the board? Who's the member of the board? When do they convene?
Which board?
The Civil Complaint Review Board.
File a complaint?
Yes.
Well, I'm sure if you file a complaint, they...
Mr. Salerno, you want to explain that? I don't know how it works. I'm not part of that committee.
By design, Council's not involved in this process. The chairman of the review board is, I just saw an email today, he's scheduling a meeting. You'll be contacted.
You have any idea when?
I don't.
Because in the process of me being contacted, I'm still being harassed by the same police officers. And the only thing I get in the mail in response from that board is that they got to reorganize. So if you're supposed to be getting back, how can you get back to me? You're not even organized yet, but they got to reorganize.
I haven't seen that letter. My understanding is they're going to be scheduling a meeting soon.
Scheduling a meeting with me?
You're going to have to take it up with them. It's not a council matter.
All right. Okay, so, other issues now. That's what I mean, going on deaf ears. They say put a complaint in, nothing happens. I've been telling you, the cop is harassing me for no reason, harassing my family. He's lying on me. He said I'm going around stealing. I'm not going around stealing. I've been telling you this, Lebo, the cop is harassing me. I've been trying to talk Chief Porter, the cop is harassing me for no reason. I asked you to do something about it, you said you was going to do something about it. Nothing's been done about it. I asked Chief Porter to do something about it, he told me he's not going to do anything because he don't believe me. I have witnesses to this. Now, I'm coming to you, trying to keep it in-house, not to blow this thing up, but I'm telling you, this cop is harassing me, he's threatening my family, he's harassing my kids. He came to my house the other day because my daughter, stepdaughter, threw something out her back window that landed in my yard. He came in my backyard, picked it up, and brought it to my front door. For what? Can you answer that? Is that protocol? For officers to do that?
I can't answer that question.
Far as the borough is concerned, who owns the land that the dirt hill sits on itself? The toxic dirt hill on Buckley Street. Who owns that land?
School district.
The school district, they own that land?
It's where they park their buses. It's the parking lot.
Are they owners or are they leasing it?
Say?
Are they owners of the land, or are they leasing it?
No, they own, the school district owns that land.
Okay. You positive?
To the best of my knowledge.
All right.
You have something that says they don't?
I asked. You're the town council president, to the best of your knowledge, the school district owns that land.
Yep.
All right. Did any of the taxpayers' money go into the Public Works Building?
Say this again?
Did any of the taxpayers' money go into the Public Works Building?
Taxpayers' money going into the building?
No. Did any of the taxpayers' money go into the building of the Public Works Building?
There was a loan taken out, a million-dollar loan taken out. That $600,000 of that loan was put towards the Public Works Facility, which will be paid through the debt service. 50% of that will be paid through the Sewer Authority, and 50% of that will be paid from the borough of the loan.
How many employees going to be working in that building? Now, that Public Works Building, is that going to generate money yearly for Bristol Borough?
Why would it, how could it generate money?
Ask, I don't know. I'm asking.
No.
It's going to save money for Bristol Borough.
Is it going to save us money?
Yes.
I'd say it's going to protect our equipment by keeping everything inside, so in the long run, sure, it'll save the borough money.
Can you ask Officer Chief Porter, excuse me, Chief Porter, is it protocol for officer to come behind my house? I committed no crime, there was no cause put against me, complaints put against me, and tell me that I stole some items, which I didn't steal? Is that protocol for him to go to Walmart to get the manager from Walmart to come to my house? When the manager from Walmart did not call him? Can you ask Chief Porter that?
I'm not a police officer. I can't answer that question.
I said, can you ask Chief Porter?
He's... I'm not asking him to answer anything.
Can I ask him?
No.
Okay. In the Bristol Borough dog leash laws, right, it states that you must have your dog on a six-foot chain and/or under reasonable control. I got cited about four times so far with my dog at large. Not one time has my dog ever been out of control, and the officers could contest this, but I still get cited. Why is that when it says "and/or under reasonable control"?
If you were cited for something and you're going to go to court, I'm sure you're going to have your day in court, and I think let the judge decide your fate.
Mm-hmm.
That's my opinion.
I always wanted to... but is that... doesn't the council make the, uh, dog leash laws?
I don't want to answer that or no. It's just a waste of time.
I... I'm not familiar with your situation. As Mr. De Giuseppe said, if you feel you were cited improperly, you appeal that to the district court, and the district court will make a decision whether the ordinance was applied correctly or not. This body is not here to consider, you know, whether you were cited properly or not. It's like somebody coming in and saying, you know, "I got cited for speeding, and, you know, the officer was wrong." That this is not a courtroom. Your recourse is to appeal it and go to court, at which point the officer testify, and the judge will make a decision. And I don't believe the ordinance says "or." I believe our ordinance says you have to have your dog on a six-foot leash.
And/or under reasonable control.
I don't believe it says that.
Believe me, I know. I read it. I studied it.
Be able to defend yourself.
I did.
When you get to court.
I did.
Okay.
I did.
Did you win?
I'm in Bristol Borough against Joe Morris. Did I win? No, I didn't win.
Okay.
Did the fine come down? Yes. Did I prove my point? Yes. Was I guilty? No. Did I win? No. All right, but anyway, in the change, Lieutenant Commander of Bristol Borough Police Department, is there a lieutenant position?
No. There are lieutenants.
No lieutenant positions? Has there ever been a lieutenant position?
I have no idea.
Do you have any idea if there's a lieutenant position coming up?
Not that I know of.
In fact, my first meeting that came here, Robin Chernell, Vice President of Robin Chernell, said that the elected officials are held to a higher standard. And are you held to a higher standard?
I suppose so.
You suppose so?
I only can speak for myself. I can't speak for everybody else.
So you feel that you should be held to a higher standard then?
Should I be held to a higher standard?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Have you ever been harassed by police officers in Bristol Borough any time in your life?
Doesn't pertain anything here.
I'm just asking, because you should maybe... maybe if you've been harassed before, like I'm getting harassed, maybe you can understand where I'm coming from when I bring this up and say I'm not trying to make this a big issue.
If you feel that you're being harassed, or you feel you... you could, as a civilian, you can go down to District Justice Office and file your own complaints about... against anybody you want. It's not a council issue. So you're just sitting here wasting everybody's time talking about a police officer that's harassing you and about charges. If you're charged, you go to court and you present your case. If you're found guilty or not guilty, that's up to the judge, not this council. If you feel you're being harassed by somebody, whether it's a cop or any individual in town, you have a right to file a complaint against that individual. So why don't you just take that recourse instead of coming here, wasting our time?
Because I took that recourse.
No, did you file a complaint at the district court?
Yes.
Against a police officer?
Yes.
And did you win?
They're still... they're doing what they're doing in Bristol Borough.
Okay.
Nothing.
Well, I don't know what to tell you. I'll be honest with you.
That's what I don't understand. Why... you're the town vice... you're the town president. You just don't have nothing to tell me though.
Not the judge.
Oh, we know that. But you're the town president, you have nothing to tell me about the police officers that run your town?
It's the mayor runs the police department.
You want to let the mayor speak?
If he wants to speak, he could speak any... I have never told the mayor he can't speak. He's a grown man, and he could say anything he wants at any meeting. Am I right, Mayor?
That's correct.
So I don't... I want to straighten something out.
You need to watch some videos again.
Let me straighten something out right now.
You need to watch some videos again.
This man...
You need to watch some videos because you said you cannot answer anything unless you said so. See, I don't know where you came from, talking about this man can speak when he wants to.
Better go re-watch your video, because you don't know what you're watching.
I know what I'm watching. Bristol Borough Archives.
He has a right to speak at any meeting, and I don't ever want to go on record saying...
You don't know what you're watching, do you?
Well, you don't know what you're talking about.
You don't know what you're talking about.
Because he has a right to speak. Don't sit here saying, "I won't let him speak."
You said it already.
That's embarrassing to him.
You said it. Not me, you said it.
Okay, you're right.
I know I'm right.
You done?
Hmm, yeah, I'm done for now.
Good. Anybody else on this... Mr. Delong?
Gibby's a blessing, man. I'm Dave Delong, 624 Point Street.
Arnie.
I lay in bed at night at, like, on a cold winter night, and that firesider ring goes off, and I think, "Who the hell will want that job?" But I'm glad they're there. That's what I think about you guys. I've come out tonight to talk to... about what I consider to be probably the most important fact I heard yous guys discuss since it's been televised. I take my hat off to you for all the beautification that you did in town, and don't wish to discourage that in any sort of kind of way, but as you stated, Ralph, you did pretty much all you could do with the borough property, and there is a blight issue. And I think far more, far, far more than any services yous can provide us or any beautification you can do, the charge that you hold with our protecting our rights as a citizen is far outweighs that. It's grand in scope. And you have an article you're going to consider tonight, number 11, and I'd like you to really, really think of what you're charged with when you make that decision. I'll be brief. America's founders understood clearly that private property is the foundation, not only of prosperity, but of freedom itself. Thus, through common law, state law, and the Constitution, they protected property rights, the rights of people to freely acquire and dispose of property. It's no accident that a nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to justice for all protects property rights. Property is the foundation of every right we have, including the right to be free. Every legal claim, after all, is a claim to something, either a defensive claim to keep what one is holding, or an offensive claim to something someone else is holding. John Locke, the philosophical father of the American Revolution and the inspiration for Thomas Jefferson, when he drafted the Declaration of Independence, stated the issue simply: "Lives, liberties, and estates," which I called by a general name, "property." And James Madison, the principal author of the Constitution, echoed those thoughts when he wrote that "as a man is said to have a right to his property, he may be equally said to have a property in his rights." Much moral confusion would be avoided if we understood that all of our rights, all of the things to which we are entitled, can be reduced to property. That would enable us to separate genuine rights, things to which we hold title, from specious rights, things to which other people hold title, which we may want. It was the genius of the old common law grounded in reason that it grasped that point, and the common law judges understood a pair of corollaries as well, that property broadly conceived separates one individual from another, and that individuals are independent or free to the extent that they have sole or exclusive domain over what they hold. Indeed, Americans go to work every day to acquire property just so they can be independent. Legal protection for property rights, it would be to no avail, however, if property once acquired could not be used and enjoyed. If rights of acquisition, enjoyment, and disposal were not legally protected, recognizing that, common law judges charged over the years with settling disputes between neighbors have drawn upon principles of reason and efficiency, and upon custom as well, to craft a law of property that respects by and large the equal rights of all. In a nutshell, the basic rights they have recognized beyond the rights of acquisition and disposal are the right of sole dominion, variously described as a right to exclude others, a right against trespass, or a right of quiet enjoyment, which all can exercise equally at the same time and in the same respect, and the right of active use, at least to the point where such use violates the rights of others to quiet enjoyment. And I think that's what's in context here. But the point to notice... but just where that point is, of course, often fact-dependent, is often fact-dependent, and is the business of courts to decide. But the point to notice in the modern context is that the presumption of the common law is on the side of free use. Common law, that is, people are not required to obtain a permit before they can use their property. No more than people today are required to obtain a permit before they can speak freely or worship freely. Rather, the burden is upon those who object to a given use, which violates a right of theirs. That amounts to having to show that their neighbor's use takes something they own free and clear. If they fail, the use may continue. Thus, the common law limits the right of free use, only when a use encroaches on the property rights of others, as in the classic law of nuisance or risk. The implications of that limit, however, should not go unnoticed. The police power and... this talks a little bit about taking properties too, but I'll cut to the chase.
Thanks.
Common law property defines the protective private rights, the rights of owners with respect to each other. It also serves as a guide for the proper scope and limits of public law, defining the rights of owners and the public with respect to each other. For public law, at least at the federal level, flows from the Constitution, and the Constitution flows from the principles articulated in the Declaration, which reflect largely the common law. The jurisdiction of public law begins then with our rights, as the Declaration makes clear. Government then follows, not to give us rights through positive law, but to recognize and secure the rights we already have. Thus, to be legitimate, government's powers must be derived from and consistent with those We cannot use the police power for non-police power purposes. It is a power to secure the rights through restraints or sanctions, not some general power to provide public influence standards. I think you get the point. I'll wrap up. The founders would be appalled to see what we did to property rights over the course of the 20th century. One would never know that their status in the borough rights was equal to that of any other right. The time has come to restore respect for these most basic of rights, the foundation of all our rights. Indeed, despotic governments have long understood that if you control property, you control the media, the churches, the political process itself. We are not at that point yet, but if regulations that provide the public with benefits continue to grow, we'll gradually slide to that point, and in the process, we'll pay an increasingly heavy price for the uncertainty and inefficiency we create. The most important price, however, will be to our system of law. No neighbor is denied the right by not passing this law tonight. How about the neighbor's rights is the argument I'm hearing? That neighbor has, in Pennsylvania, nuisance laws he could take up. He has what the gentleman here the other night was talking about with the blight. And as someone who was trying to operate a... get up and running and operate a food cart, and Ralph or anybody that's been involved with food, if you call the board of health, man, you'll get a colostomy of your neighbor. Trust me. I find that the easiest way is with kindness. How do we know with these couches? Is that some old lady? That's the best she can do? Did anybody inquire? Is that... is that her form of enjoyment? Now, you know my stance on landlords. If it's a landlord and his only requirement is to sign a check at the end of the month, I say hammer him with everything at your disposal. But you can't say... you can't legislate your way of thinking on people. You can't put into law how you think people should act. You can't say, "We don't want one on our block." They did that in the '50s, only they were talking about race. You can't do that. I applaud Mr. Pezz's ambition. I'm not here to try to cut that in the least. I believe your intentions were genuine. I just think that, man, people for hundreds of years fought, bled, and died for them rights, and you don't take them away because there's four or five couches. There's other ways. That's just my opinion. I applaud Ms. Chernell and Ms. Rodriguez for already seeing it that way, Mr. Savatini and Mr. Devine, my councilmen, for listening to me, and I would hope that the rest of you consider another way. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything?
I only wanted to say that all of the Septa platform has been repaired and all the holes, especially the dangerous ones near the railroad tracks. So it looks pretty decent. And I thank you for starting that.
You said we'll get it done right away.
Right.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? State your name.
My name's Joe Nelson, 2416 Wilson Avenue, and I would also like to address number 11. And with all due respect to Mr. Delong's wonderful presentation, he's right on target with most of his comments, but when we talk about rights, we're talking about everybody's rights. We have laws and ordinances guiding our everyday life, no matter what we do. We get in the car, we have speed limits, turn signal limits. If we get into ordinances, it's to protect the general public. It's to protect the individuals that sometimes don't even realize they need protection, and it's to protect their neighbors. There's reasons we have ordinances, such as not putting your trash out before 6:00 PM the night before trash collection, that it must be in an approved can, that the can must be removed by 6:00 PM the following night. It's to prevent damage to the environment and damage to the area by animals getting in there, and some people don't have the common sense to do that or the wherewithal to do that. If you hold the hammer overhead, they're more likely to do that. None of us like living by those, and we can point to any ordinance that says it's overabundance. It's too much. It's the guidelines to our life is what it is. And the neighbors and the neighborhood and the people that reside in that neighborhood have rights also. They don't need feral cats living in their neighborhood or feral dogs or animals and these indoor furniture being out on the porches. They don't need bug infestations. We have ordinances why we have grass canopies so high, or we'll go in and cut it and bill you for it or lean your property. The Supreme Court has upheld that municipalities do have a certain amount of actual responsibility to protect everybody in that community. Now, eight, nine years ago, I wouldn't come and argue with you because the biggest violator of our ordinances was the borough itself. But we've addressed those issues. We have a building now that meets code. We have buildings, roads, and things like that that do meet the barest necessities of the borough. But we just can't say the ordinance is not needed because obviously it presents a safety issue. If you have one of these stuffed chairs or sofas out on a porch somewhere, an open porch, somebody could flick a cigarette into it, you've got a fire. If it's a multifamily dwelling, now you've got a conflagration on your hands. So there are reasons and you are charged with responsibility to protect all borough citizens, whether they agree with the ordinance or not. And I think it would be a good step in the right direction if we passed this ordinance, affording those protections to the neighbors and the neighborhoods where these violations occur. Now, we have a very liberal they can put large pieces of furniture out twice a week, you know, two pieces every night of trash collection and get them collected twice a week. That's a very liberal policy. And I'm sure that if it's an elderly person or a disabled person that can't move a sofa off the porch, they can ask their friends and neighbors and we can get volunteers out there to do it for them. There's no doubt about it, getting it out the night before and out to the curb. But again, it's something that should be considered. I've seen it in my own ward and some of these row homes where they sound out and the people on both sides are suffering because of it. So we have a right to protect all of the people all of the time. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else on this side of the room that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Ken Beckslay. I live up in East Ward. I wanted to follow-
Let's take your address for the record, please.
I'm sorry?
Your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. 337 Cleveland Street. I wanted to follow up on the number 11 agenda item also. I respect what Mr. DeLong said. Makes a lot of sense, but I also agree with a lot what Mr. Nelson said. And I doubt, I have faith in this council and future councils that you're not going to turn Bristol into a nanny state or a gated community. At last week's meeting, I heard discussions about redevelopment authority, you know, Bob White up here, blighted property. Mr. President talked about people not taking care of their yards, their houses, and I agree 100%. I don't know how this issue doesn't fall into kind of that category. The ordinance was introduced for health risks and as to protect property values. I don't know how anybody could be against an ordinance meant to protect people's health or property values. You said nanny states been brought up, gated community been brought up, too much government infringing on people's rights were brought up. But where's the fine line come into play when the issue is an infringement on neighbor's property? I'm sure if someone start-
It's already on the books.
Excuse me?
It's already on the books. If it infringes on your health or well-being, you have every right to get the couch removed. You don't have to make another ordinance before a couch-
Well, if that's the case and the solicitor can, you know, capitalize on that, but, okay, thank you. Anyhow, people are always talking, I hear it all the time, about how their property values are dropping or people can't sell their houses. This is an opportunity that Mr. Pezza, Councilman Pezza, is introducing that could only help that issue. You know, so, I mean, homes and businesses, they, you know, they need to have a certain standard. I'm sorry, you know. And like you said, it's not just an infringement on that individual, but it's the one next door, the people across the street. So anyhow, Bristol's not the first municipality to pass an ordinance like this and I'm sure they're not going to be the last. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak on any issues on this side of the room? Anybody back on this side? Before I close, public participation. Participation is closed. Number three on the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of 411, 423, and 57, to accept the treasurer's report for March, to accept the police and DJ's report for April, to accept the fire chief's report for April, to accept the borough inspector's report for April, to accept the planning commission report for March 19, to accept the HARB report for April 30, and to accept the zoning hearing board report.
Second by Mr. Savatini.
I have, I'm sorry, I have an amendment.
Wait, Mr. Tony. Second by Mr. Savatini. Any questions or comments? Now you can speak.
Got you. I would like to make an amendment to the minutes for 423. It was marked in our minutes that there was unanimous vote for the redesign of the canopy. I think it's for like $39,000, which I did not vote for. I just want to make a note of that. I think it was the 23rd, April 23rd.
That was the special meeting.
It was 11th. Then it was the 11th, 411.
Usually don't make mistakes.
Not like that.
Sorry. No, the one was the canopy and that was a separate one. The two that we put together, remember? I asked if we could put them all individually and you said you could just-
So we'll note that some way in this month's minutes. We'll change it.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Any other questions or comments? Favor for the minutes? They posed? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a resolution adopting Landmark Towns of Bucks County Bicycle and Marketing Strategy Initiative.
I have a second. Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Number five.
I'd like to make a motion authorizing Gilmore and Associates to represent the borough in future waterfront improvement efforts.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Borough Civil Service Commission to establish a police hiring eligibility list.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Polansky. Questions or comments? Mr. Savatini.
Mr. President, with the motion number six going through and passing, does that mean that we'll be looking to hire or is this just for eligibility?
Eligibility. What we're doing, just for everybody again, we don't have an active list. So for some reason, if two or three cops left, somebody got hurt and we needed to hire somebody, we were under the gun, we have a list that we can go to. So the list will be good for one year.
It's good for one. That was my next question. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to allocate $4,000 to the fire companies to install carbon monoxide detectors for the fire chief's recommendation.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary final minor subdivision for Thomas Rudisale for 239 to 241 Mulberry Street, subject to compliance with the engineering review letter of 51412 and compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission Review Letter of March 9, 2012.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? Favor?
Aye.
Posed? Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to withdraw a motion to request the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to reallocate grant the grant for Gateway Improvement Project to the proposed Canal's End and Middle Beach Roads Project due to the fact that it would cost the taxpayers $90,000 if this went through. And if you could speak some more on that, that would be great.
Basically, this is a project that started about 10 years ago or more on Old Route 13. We wanted to continue the walking path from Mill Street all the way to the Point Pass at the end of Old Route 13. There was a lot of issues with Comrail and all the railroad companies. They wouldn't give us the ground, the tracks, who was going to do the environmental cleanup. So this project's been sitting for 10 years. We thought we were close to resolving this and we weren't. Mr. Savatini asked if we can take this, what's it, $800,000?
$750,000.
$700,000 some thousand to another project in town. So we contacted them and they said it's very possible that you can, but we would have to spend $90,000 in engineering fees and costs associated with this to try to move the money and then it may not even be eligible. So we discussed this and we feel that you're throwing good money against bad money and it really wasn't the right thing to do. And like Lorraine said, it's only, it's the cost to the taxpayers. If they guaranteed us this money and we knew we could spend $90,000 to get $800,000, all eight of us would vote tonight for that. But there's been over $100,000 or more spent on this project already and no way to recover that. So I think at some point, you gotta just say, "We're done with the project and let's move on." So Mrs. Cullen withdrew her motion. Therefore, there won't be a vote on that and the project will just, will send the letter saying, "Thanks, but no thanks." Mr. Savatini.
I'd like to make a comment on number nine. I was councilman when the Iced Tea Project had first came up. It was a great idea. It ran into a lot of hurdles. I don't like to send any money back, especially 3/4 of a million dollars. But at the cost of $90,000 to our taxpayers, I don't think it's worth the money. And I don't think it's worth raising taxes by even $1 to the people of this town if it's going to hit against a brick wall. I don't want to send money back, but this is absolutely a no-win situation which we have tried to find ways to wiggle our way through and we just ran up against brick walls everywhere we went. So I think this council will agree that this motion has to go. We have to let this grant go because today, $90,000 is a lot of money and it can't be put on anybody's, on any taxpayer's back.
Okay, number 10 on the agenda.
Mr. President, due to, as per a conversation with the borough manager and also with some more, hopefully some more opportunity to discuss number 10 a little bit further with John, our current inspector, and with the understanding that we might be able to look at contracting a group that we already contract with,